Time is five thirty nine P M. I'd like to call our third budget meeting to order. Mister Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Miss Daniels. Miss Green.
Present.
Mister Madsen.
Here.
Mister Majors. Miss Rawls. Mister Rodriguez. Miss Bowers.
Present. Please note for the record that Councilman Rodriguez may be joining us a little late. If not, he is excused completely. And Councilwoman Rawls is excused this evening. Thank you. I will now defer for our committee business to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President.
Thank you very much, President Bowers, and thank everyone for being here tonight. Uh, tonight, we will be going over the Bureau of City Services, which is Public Works, the Bureau of Neighborhood Services and Park Maintenance, Bureau of Traffic and Engineering, Bureau of Fleet Management, Bureau of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, and possibly the I T Department. So we will get things started with the Bureau of City Services, Public Works. Uh, if you could give us an overview of what your department does, some of your accomplishments for this year, and um, just kind of some of your goals for next year, that'd be great. And then you will respond to any questions that you received ahead of time that you already gave us a response to. We just read those responses out. And then if we have any questions, we'll ask from there.
Good evening, Council. Uh, David West, Director of Public Works for the City of Harrisburg. Um, an overall of the Department of Public Works as far as city services, the Departments of Sanitation, Highway, Demolition. Our accomplishments have been exceeding as far as trash and the overhaul of over almost a million pounds of illegal dumping throughout the city throughout the year. Our uh, Highway Department consists of our road paving. We have been uh, one major road, six uh, secondary roads and twelve hours up to this point. Um, pretty much the team has continued to work together. We are in leaf season. We're coming to the end of leaf season, uh, to which we have accomplished about thirty-four tons in just, just this week alone. And we continue and our yard waste is actually extended. Our yard waste pickup, which is supposed to end December first today, we've extended it two weeks because of leaves falling late. And we'll continue another two weeks after this two-week session to pick up bags only unless it snows. And that's where we are up to this point.
All right, any um, any projects or anything you're working on uh, for next year that you planned out in this budget or anything that you want to highlight uh, for your department for this upcoming fiscal year?
Well, we're going to continue on the course of the road paving and we plan on paving how to pave three major roads and secondary roads. And however many alleys that our funding allows us to. That's throughout the some course of the summer, or spring going into the fall. That's our focus. As far as our sanitation department, we will continue to uh, pick up waste throughout Harrisburg, Stilton, Pembroke, and Backstang and recycling yard waste.
All right. Thank you very much. Did you have any questions that were asked of you beforehand? Any like a free type questions?
No, ma'am.
All right. Then we will get right into it with questions. Uh, one second.
Uh, yes, there is a clarification point on this particular budget. We've resubmitted um, an entire chapter for city services. There was a position that was not listed on the original proposed budget that you received. So we consulted with the solicitor, the Human Resource Director and the Public Works Director. This is a relatively new position. It's the lot administrator. We also provided the job description for the lot administrator. As you know, the um, city maintains hundreds of lots. Four hundred and sixteen lots, and we've been hiring a private consultant to, to, to um, you know, cut the grass, clean the ice, clean the snow and so forth, and we have not received the quality of services that we wish, mostly because it's almost impossible to manage four hundred and sixteen lots without a lot administrator. So in his uh, in infinite wisdom, in the return of um, Mister West, he came up with this ingenious idea to create this lot administrator position. The position's maximum salary is fifty-seven thousand dollars per year, and he is currently interviewing internally for this position. So um, if you um, would um, give us your tolerance, we have um, listed the position as the very last position under management. And uh, we've included the FICA for that position and we reran all of the um, budgeted uh, numbers and uh, data so that you have a complete chapter for city services. It's the only thing that has changed. This position has been added. The administration has given us permission, the mayor and the um, business administrator to um, present this before you to potentially add this position as a new position for the purposes of the management of the lot through the lot administrator and through the executive, uh, Mister West who oversee that lot administrator.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I, I do recall us having a conversation about a lot administrator at some point throughout this year. I believe the position was filled at some point throughout this year. I don't think the candidate uh, is with us any longer, but that tells me the position was in the budget last year. You can't fill a position that's not in there.
It wa- it was. Budget last year, and we, we do, we should have it listed as it.
And you had it as a reallocation. It was an unfunded position that the council funded mid-year.
Oh, that's correct.
Yes.
So we're not adding the position and we are funding the position for this.
That's correct.
It was, it was skipped in the text of this, that's all. It was just an administrative oversight, you know, with a lot of eyes, just looking at different parts at the same time.
Okay, so that's just a position that's not removed and it's being funded for this year.
That's correct, fully funded.
Okay.
My apologies for missing. Mister West knows a little more than I do on that, so I apologize.
All right, um, I'm going to uh, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. Um, as before I open it up though, I'm going to ask one of the standard questions I always ask public works when it comes to street paving. When Sycamore Street going to get paved? I had a resident who actually broke the axle on their car hitting a pothole on Sycamore Street, like seventeenth and Sycamore Street. That's how bad some of these potholes are.
What, 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 what we did was, there was a, a five-year plan that we are in the third year of the plan. And there were some major roads that were not completed, so we compiled the list that uh, we took the one-year plan, two-year plan, and combined that to be the emergency plan and then add on anything that we can accomplish in the three-year plan. And that's how we're going to move forward to uh, answer your question that we will make sure that Sycamore Street will be on the list for this coming season.
All right. Thank you, because I'm like three-year plan. What year are we in? Just, just so I can put it in my mind.
This is the third year.
Okay, okay. All right. Um, I've got a couple other questions. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues first. I will start with uh, the Chair of Public Works here to my right, Councilman Madsen.
Uh, yeah. Some of our previous meetings, we discussed the uh, contracts with surrounding municipalities. Um, but I think it'd be good to just bring up for next year. Uh, maybe there's a question for solicitor. How many of these are up for renewal or when, when do, when do we renew these contracts?
Next.
Those discussions.
We just actually were on the phone today as a group with Steelton, with their council and their folks. Their contract expires next December thirty-first. It's the first one to expire.
Okay.
And over the year, there'll be a discussion on, on renewal that has to take into consideration both the needs of the city and the, and the needs of the people of Steelton. Um, and a decision will be made, I think, early on between the two parties, whether they continue it or not based on those needs. I thought the tone of the conversation was very positive. So, you know, we look forward to just, you know, there'll be some things that get updated as lessons learned over the, over the four years. I guess we did this.
Okay, and in terms of the capacity standpoint, are we at a good complement to continue solid services for Steelton and the surrounding municipalities?
Yes, we are. As far as the uh, equipment, the manpower and the services that we have been providing, we can continue to provide. Uh, if, continue to reach an agreement as far as financing, you know, to make it eligible for us to continue. That's what's going to be the course of the conversation.
And just for the benefit of the, is the purpose of this to, is it for the city to generate revenue? Is that why we do it or is it?
No, it's for a purpose to, the primary purpose is the intergovernmental agreement that we have, not just with Steelton, but with Pembroke and Backstang also. We, we were in the agreement to try to intergovernmental agreements with not just sanitation or public works, but with fire bureau, with police bureau because of, that's the direction that we took at the time. It wasn't in the business to make profit.
Okay. All right, well, we'll have to continue the conversation into next year and hopefully uh, they'll continue on to work with us. Touched on street paving. Um, we're heading into the winter months. Uh, how are we feeling with equipment? Everything else in terms of dealing with heavy snowfall, that type of stuff.
We are ready for snow season. We're actually uh, currently prepping for the winter season. We're placing our spreaders and checking the plows and making sure everything is ready to go. We also have in contact with uh, uh, to our, our vendors. I don't know, uh, previously last year, but previous years that I was here, we always had a vendor in case we get a major snowstorm that we could not handle. So we could have a, we would be at the top of their list.
Okay, so the current budget was, we'll be able to address all those needs that we.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Was there anything that I know a lot of the departments had to go back just to make the budget solvent? I mean, were there some things in there that you've particularly really think you needed that were taken out that are worthy of note?
Sure, that's always.
What were they?
We work and we will continue to work with what we have until we have the available funding that continue the process to go to the next level.
Would you mind, what, what were some of those things?
Uh, well, one of the things was a, we needed a uh, milling machine that was um, compatible to mill onto a triaxle versus the milling machine that we have to try to cut time. And it was um, decided that if we went that direction, that we would probably have to uh, rent the equipment. And that place that instead of purchasing, we will rent to try to get to where we need it. The only problem with renting is you become a number on the list.
Right.
When you're in paving season and everyone's paving, it's top priority.
Okay. So it may be that we may not be able to pave the roads as we'd like because of, if it's a really busy paving season?
If it's a, yes, sir. If it's a really, really paved season, we will, we will put uh, uh, our request in. But again, everyone else is putting their best they most.
Is there any other items?
And we have a, we have a lo- very large pavement, but we wanted to go to the next level to pave uh, wider streets. Like uh, let me say Sixth Street, for example. I use that, for example, as a, a wider street and so we wouldn't have to go through uh, so many levels of paving. We have to go through one run. And we're not able to purchase that, but we also are able to go into a renting of that piece of equipment also. But again, you become a number. So not to say that we will not receive the equipment, but.
It could happen.
Yes.
So in the past, when we've had to rent, how, how much has that had an impact on our goals in terms of paving?
Well, up to this point, it hasn't had an impact because we have been able to purchase to go from like a third-level pavement to a secondary-level pavement. And we received a newer pavement, uh, I think two years ago. And we do have a, a wider milling head versus, let me say, uh, since you have a two-foot milling here, we have a four-foot milling here. Instead of six inches, we can go twelve inches into the ground currently. The only issue with that is it doesn't go straight into the truck. We just have to have a sweeper and other equipment to get it up before we can clean up. It's just more time because of this.
Understood. Okay, I don't have any other questions at this time, but I mean, a little later. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Madsen. Council President Bowers, any questions or comments?
Yes, I have some questions. Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to clarify some of the vacancies that are available uh, within the department. Um, you noted that the lot administrator you're currently interviewing internally. Um, we talked about the Assistant City Solicitor Collections role yesterday uh, with the city solicitor. The Recycling Coordinator. This notes, I guess, a position being funded beginning November first of two thousand twenty-three. Is that accurate?
Recycling Coordinator.
Yes. This notes that the Recycling Coordin- Coordinator, there is a date behind the position. November first, two thousand twenty-three. Is that when you intend to fill the role?
Oh, the role has been filled.
Okay. So it's, it's not funded until November first? I guess I'm just trying to clarify what that the, the.
The Recycle Coordinator, actually, this is, I'm explaining to you happened from the beginning.
Okay.
The Recycle Coordinator who is in the position for him here now where he's tired.
I knew that.
But in order to, in order to receive a recycle coordinator and to be trained by, currently he's retired, we have had to fill a position and I used the, the Recycle Coordinator under the sanitation supervisor.
Okay. So there, is this the one where their salary, I guess, will be sixty-two thousand?
Currently.
Okay.
But the recycle coordinator is aware of that that salary will not stay the same. We, I, I, I had to, I had to make a decision to bring a recycle coordinator in under the sanitation supervisor in order to be trained so we can carry on the duties of that recycle coordinator and also user and recycling throughout Harrisburg, Pembroke, Backstang, and Steel.
Okay. Uh, the last vacancy I had a question about is the motor equipment operator. Um, when do you intend to fill that vacancy? Which quarter of two thousand twenty-three?
Motor equipment operator position, it was interviewed and we were in the process of hiring. Uh, motor equipment.
Oh, okay. Uh, was this an internal or an external candidate? Just curious.
External.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up to some of the questions from, uh, Council President Bowers. For the recycling coordinator, it looks like it's only funded at ten thousand dollars for the year.
That's this year?
No, for all of next year.
And the recycle coordinator that I have now would have to continue to sustain the sanitation supervisor position. Because we must continue to have a recycle coordinator to do the work that we need done throughout city services.
Okay, perhaps that's a, a conversation that you and the finance department should have. If they are the recycling coordinator, then it should be funded. And we should have a recycling coordinator, not that we have a, someone acting as a recycling coordinator under a different role.
We were just unsure when that person would be elevated to that next position. But wait, we will work that work.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Majors, any comments or questions?
Okay, um, so I guess I'll go back to the recycling coordinator position. I know in the past, we had positions that were funded out of multiple budgets. Is the recycling coordinator solely funded out of the Bureau of City Services? Were they funded in, I think it was, uh, at one point it was Neighborhood Services with the Host Municipality fee fund?
Um, city services, um, is Neighborhood Service Fund. The Neighborhood Services Fund includes city services and parks maintenance.
Okay, so, but, so.
So to answer your question, uh, uh, even further than it was, uh, created out of the host fee.
Right.
And wanted to be transferred into the city.
Okay, so it is solely funded through the Bureau of City Services. It's not funded using the host fee?
Not to money.
Okay. Um, then I guess the, the point that Chair Green and President Bowers were making is still, I guess, needs to be clarified for us in terms of, I guess, we have three sanitation supervisors funded, a recycling coordinator funded as proposed to the tune of ninety-six, nine thousand six hundred ninety dollars. So are we taking one of, so the current sen- the current recycling coordinator is funded as a sanitation supervisor?
Currently. And we had to, again, do that in order to get her in, get her acquainted to our system by the retiring cycle coordinator.
Okay. Okay, um. And again, first, that's, also, I want to apologize for my, I already decided I intended to have to get taken care of. So apologize for being late. Uh, with respect to, um, that's line forty-two, four-two-two zero-nine-six, still in disposal. And, um, we have fees in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, but in the other budget years, there's, you're, uh, I was just trying to understand.
That number again?
It was four-two-two zero-nine-six, still in disposal. First two years, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, there are, uh, dollar amount associated, but years moving out, there, there is, I'm just trying to see what the, what the change was there. Six, still in disposal. In twenty nineteen, there was eighty thousand. Twenty twenty, two hundred and thirty-six thousand. And then twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, plus a zero.
Perhaps Mr. Brian McCutcheon could, um, give us a little more clarity? I know during, uh, during some of the quarterly updates, it seems like this might have been migrated to its own separate accounting. But, um, maybe he can update us on that.
I think maybe.
Um, I apologize. What, can you, can you?
All right.
It is.
Yeah, it's on. It's regarding the Steelton disposal, four-two-two zero-nine-six.
Okay. Yeah, the, the, we reclassed, um, when we, when we first created the budget units for the boroughs, we, in, in, in the previous years, we created, uh, specific accounts, which was cumbersome. So actually, the budget for disposal for Steelton appears above at, I, I apologize. I think what we're looking at is, um, this is Neighborhood Services, the Public Works portion. The Steelton and also the other two boroughs have their own, uh, unique budget units. So that any account is, would be like, um, Councilman Majors, it would be for Steelton. It would end in two-five-two-five. And the expenditure account would be four-two-two oh-nine-one. If you're looking at, we're looking at, uh, the six point eight million for, for Neighborhood Services. Um, city services or public works piece? Yeah. Yeah, thank you. That, yeah. Steelton is two-five-two-five, Pembroke is.
What's the page number again? Cause that's not the, the page we have is a, a list of.
We can, we can get clear, we can get clarity on this after. I just wanted to make sure. It's just charged separately. Okay, it's no longer, yeah, no problem. No additional questions at this time, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, I do have a, a couple of questions, uh, looking at the demolition and clearing line item. I see it's increased by about two hundred thousand. Are we looking to do more demolition and clearing? Or what are some of those plans for, for that increase? Or is just the cost of doing it increased?
Cost, the cost of the increase, uh, has been to, uh, reach the numbers and not only in the demolition itself, the cost has increased. Contracting out, cost has increased also.
Okay. Uh, also looking at the miscellaneous contracted services, it's a, what, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand? Uh, could we just go over some of those contracts or some of the things that we are contracting out, uh, in your department?
Same as contracted services, service that we use throughout the year or not contracted services, services that we need contracted throughout the year, for example. If we wanted to a major snow season, we have to hire contractors. We have to have the funding in order to pay those, finance those contracts.
All right. Also, under snow control, I see it's zero budgeted. Is it moved somewhere else or? I hope, okay, all right. And then the motor fuels and lubricants. I see that went down, the gas went up. Okay. Okay.
Also, under the contracted services, uh, I'd be, uh, contracted services be paid also of the pays that we're trying to get. That's where, uh, Councilman Madison was having a discussion about earlier. That's the fund that we need to use. Instead of, instead of us being able to accomplish our feat because we don't have the necessary live equipment.
Okay. And then I think it's my last question. Uh, maybe not, but uh, under equipment vehicles, I see it increased. Last year it was zero budgeted. This year it's eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand budgeted. Are we looking to buy some new stuff?
That's the fleet, that's the, um, enterprise fleet.
Okay. All right. I think that's all the questions. I was, I was gonna say.
Sorry, I'm sorry. That, that's incorrect. You said, say, say that again. I'm sorry.
Under four-five-three-zero-zero-four, it's a line item says equipment vehicle.
Yes. That's the purchase of sanitation packer. There are going to be two, uh, recycle packers and one sanitation packer, but the funding of the non-o2 grant will fund three hundred and fifty thousand of the purchase of the two. And we would finance it.
Okay. All right. I think that's the questions that, uh, that I have for your department. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Thank none. Thank you very much for being here tonight. And I think that's all we have for you. And welcome back.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Bureau of Traffic and Engineering.
If you don't mind, um, I will lead off. And, uh, then Veronica will follow. Um, the reason why I'm leading off is that the administration has asked me to step in and speak on behalf of the mayor and the business administrator. The city has hired or will be hiring very soon a city engineer, as Dan had mentioned. After a multi-month process, the city has selected an engineer, an engineering candidate who will bring decades of municipal engineering experience to the city. Just this week, the candidate passed the background check run through the Bureau of Human Resources and Police and accepted a formal offer of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Our city engineer candidate is tentatively scheduled to start on January seventeenth. And as we are able to release more information after he notifies his current employer, we will share that with everyone. Currently have a resume, but we want to respect his rights to inform his, his employer before we distribute. The selected candidate holds, uh, multiple engineering degrees and certificates, has served as an engineer for over thirty years. And luckily for the city, has a proven track record, record in writing and receiving transportation grants. We fully expect him to be an amazing addition to the, um, grant, to Rebecca's grants team. Um, as he has extensive grant writing experience in the field of public works and engineering. As it pertains to Dalwood Engineering, we have greatly reduced the consulting line item from a hundred and fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. More in line with historic budgeted amounts that we have used in the past when we had a full-time. We anticipate using a portion of these funds to transition over to the in-house engineer and wrap up some of the great work that they have done, uh, doing a number of projects for Public Works and Traffic Engineering. I believe he's, when he's saying they, he means Dalwood. And, uh, so we, we hope to welcome him very soon and have him before you for approval. And now, um, Veronica is prepared to answer the questions. And I think Mr. Wes is prepared to discuss, because he now oversees, um, the Bureau of Traffic and Engineering. He did discuss the paving, which is part of the traffic. But also, um, he'll discuss just briefly some of the goals that he believes the new engineer will have. And, um, and the goals for improved, uh, traffic signalizing and traffic compliance.
Thank you. My name is Veronica. Um, I'm the traffic and streetlight manager. The stuff that we've done this year, uh, we did, we, we did all the lights up in Bellevue. We made them all LEDs. We took the old, um, decorative poles down and put new decorative poles up. Um, we're in the process of painting curbs, um, thirty feet back from the stops, signs, um, twenty feet from intersections, uh, fifteen feet from hot fire hydrants, um, to try and help eliminate some of the parking problems that we have on the corners and residents, um, getting upset that they can't see when they're trying to make a turn at a stop sign. We put up, um, new signal lights at, um, Market and Fifth. Um, there's some new ones at, throughout the city that we're putting up that are new, the new LEDs. Um, so some of our plans for next year is to finish the other side of, um, the Bellevue, um, area and to work on the, um, Mulberry Square Apartments. Um, those lights, um, the bolts and stuff are starting to rust out and the lights are starting to fall. So we want to redo all of that so that it's, the lights are sturdy and we don't have anyone, um, get injured from the lights falling. And, uh, to continue painting, um, we're gonna work on putting all new, um, signs up. Um, cause a lot of the signs in the city are, you can't read them. So we're gonna start doing all that.
All right. And were there any questions asked of traffic and engineering beforehand? If so, could you read off those questions and answers for us?
The first question, what is the status of filling the city engineer vacancy since the Dalwood engineer contract ends on December thirty-first? Um, the city engineer has been hired as Maria has stated. Um, the second question is, when do you intend to fill the traffic engineer technician to vacancy, which quarter of two thousand twenty-three? And do we have any external candidates? We intend to fill the traffic technician to position as soon as possible. However, our current personnel must fill, must first complete traffic tech engineer one through the IMSA accredited, accredited training. Um, IMSA is currently doing an updated training on their program, so it's not going to be available until March twenty twenty-three. At which point, our personnel will be sent for this training. Due to the extensive amount of training and knowledge required for the, um, transition from tech one to tech two, it is unlikely our personnel will be able to complete the required program in two thousand twenty-three. Therefore, we have no time scale on which, when we will fill the technician to role unless an external candidate comes forward. Instead of the tech two position, if all training IMSA, IMSA through IMSA is completed, should be filled by the third quarter of two thousand twenty-four. Also, at this time, we do not have any candidates for the tech two. External candidates. Question three is at which time do you intend to fill the traffic engineer tech four vacancy, which quarter? And do we have an external? At this time, we don't have, we do not have any external candidates who who could complete, sorry. At this time, we do not have any, any internal candidates who can complete the necessary training to reach tech four status by two thousand twenty-three. Within that mind, we do not have plans to fill that position, uh, in two thousand twenty-three unless an external candidate presents himself. Um, initially, we could have possibility of this position filled by the end of two thousand twenty-six. Um, if the necessary certification is obtained through IMSA. Um, what, so the, the next question is, what is the borough's diversity? Um, the department's diversity is we have seven males and three females. Um, our ethnicity is Latin, African-American and Caucasian. And age range, age range is from twenty-six to the sixty-two. And the last question is, are any of our employees bilingual? Yes, we have three that are bilingual.
Thank you. I'm going to open up questions starting to my right with Councilman Madison.
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Council President Bowers. Count to President Bowers.
Thank you, thanks Veronica for answering the questions I, I submitted. But I do have one question and this may be for Solicitor Grover, it's related to the city engineer and the information Ms. Kelly uh, shared. So with the contract ending December thirty-first and the tentative start date of January seventeen, there is a window where I guess we wouldn't have uh, an engineer stamp? Is there a limited extension that could occur? Or we would just not be able to do anything really at the beginning of the year?
Based on past practices, we would be able to find a way to extend that contract. As long as there's funding still available for the contract. Um, whether that's funding from the twenty twenty-two budget, that's a purchase order that carried forward, or it's a funding from the twenty twenty-three budget for contractual services. Um, I don't think the city would be responsible to put in a position where if they needed to uh, stamp from an engineer, they could not have one. Um, if it required an actual additional contract, that could come back to council for ratification at the point, I think it would probably be the new engineer bringing it to you to explain what his assessment of the needs are of the city and with this contract.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were covered. In the event there was something at the very beginning of the year that we might need.
If it went on longer than ninety or a hundred and twenty days, it'd be a problem. But, but as long as it's a first quarter issue, it's resolvable pretty easily.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, thank you.
Councilman Majors.
Thank you and uh, thank you Veronica for being here. Yes, one question, uh, just for, for the public, the best way to get in contact with someone if there is an issue with streetlights? I know, um, we have a website in three-one-one, but you know, we get residents that still reach out to us about streetlights. I try to recommend there, but is there the best way for residents to get in contact with your department to address any issues they maybe have?
Yes, they can call me directly, um, on my work cellphone. Um, I, anybody that calls, I give them my phone number, uh, seven one seven eight five seven five one five seven.
This is your first time in a public microphone?
Yeah, I know it's, uh, uh, but so, no, but yeah, well, I appreciate that and all the work that, that you do do. Yeah, we'd be prepared to get some phone calls.
I get them already.
Yeah, uh, but in terms of uh, the site, I know we have the streetlight map that both can access. Is that something that's updated in real time or that just shows where the outages are? So I remember at one point the city had the see click, see click fix app. That you could say, hey, my lights are at this address and it would go somewhere and it could get addressed. Uh, is there anything else like that, that the city's exploring um, to help residents? Or is this all, uh, anything else like that the city's exploring?
As far as I know, uh, no.
Okay. And I have one last question, in terms of the updated to this, the municipal system as we get off of the mainframe. Have you all been in contact or in touch with the planning there? And uh, are you, do you expect any um, changes on how you do your operations due to the changeover and uh, the technology that the city's upgrading to?
Right now, we're um, underneath the, a Talentsa system. Um, and we have had contractors um, fix the streetlights for me. So when um, they'll fix them and they work for a couple of days and then they'll go out. And once we look at the report, it says that the power's too high, power's too low. So I'll get ahold of PPNL, um, PPNL tells us it's a Talentsa system. So then I called them and it's a battle between that. So my personal opinion, um, with working on streetlights before I became the manager, um, is to take that system out and go back to the photo cells. Um, we had less problems when we were doing the photo cells than we do with the Talentsa system itself.
Okay, uh, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you very much. Um, most of my questions have been asked and answered, I do have one question. Looking at the budget, there is an other line item uh, for one hundred and forty-five thousand, last year was two hundred and forty thousand. But looking at the spend as of October, zero percent was spent out of that, could you say, just explain? Uh. Line four nine 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 five. But looking at the expenditure status report that was provided as well, it shows it under other, zero percent of that budget was still spent year to date as of October. And if it's something you will need to get back to us about, please feel free to.
I apologize, the um, there were missing parts of the project, which uh, the project manager that, that the city currently has was supposed to take on with the contractors of spending these funds. So the numbers might be more accurate, uh, as he, as he returns for us to give back you with that, with an accurate answer.
Okay. Do we think that he'll be back before the end of budget hearing?
He'll be back Monday.
All right, thank you. I think that's the only question that I have. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for being here tonight, um, and indulging us with our, our questions and your answers. I believe we'll be moving on to the next department. Which is Bureau of Fleet Management.
Yes, the Bureau of Fleet Management will be presented this evening by Jessica Parker, I mean Williams.
Hi, I'm Jessica, I'm sorry, I'm Jessica Williams, I'm the fleet manager for the Bureau of Fleet Management. I'm gonna go ahead and um, read the questions and give you the answers. Um, when do you intend to fill the automotive mechanic one vacancy? Uh, what quarter of twenty twenty-three, external candidates? And when do you intend to fill the three automotive mechanic four vacancies? What quarter of twenty twenty-three and external candidates? Um, at this time, we do intend to fill the automotive mechanic one vacancy um, in quarter three um, by July. Um, and then we will be planning on um, for external candidates. And then also for the, we plan on filling the three automotive mechanic four positions um, by quarter two in April.
All right, if you'd just give us a brief overview of what you guys do in your department, um, maybe some of the things you've done or would you like to accomplish for this coming year?
If I may answer that. Jessica has just been hired by the city, Hasburg is the fleet manager. And we are currently in the process of hiring a new uh, foreman. Uh, Foreman currently resigned and we have interviews set for uh, Foreman, we've had an interview for one mechanic. And we are in the process of changing the entire uh, fleet department totally around and establishing new mechanics, parts. And the department within itself.
Sounds exciting, I'll go ahead and open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments. I'll start with Councilman Madsen.
Kind of been a while since we've had this, when did this position go vacant? Okay, yeah. Um, I think it should be helpful for my context, I know that you're new, but um, I guess what are your goals um, for the year in terms of um, yeah, things you'd like to see accomplished and maybe touch on how it's reflected in the budget?
Um, yes, my goals for the year is to um, basically um, revamp our parts department. Um, so we can, um, so it's cost efficient as far as um, cleaning out what we currently have. Um, and then also um, having a proactive approach and tracking system to where we're ordering parts in advance and not using um, other vendors that are not necessary. Um, so we also are looking at um, a vehicle maintenance tracking system um, that I'm going to keep track of as far as preventative goes, um, so to where we won't have as high as cost for repairs, um, if uh, for the preventative maintenance tracking.
Okay, and then maybe touch on some things um, that you would have liked in the budget that aren't there and, you know, what we may be missing out on this year.
Um, at this time, I don't have anything for that.
Okay. Okay.
And our, our budget has been pretty good as far as being passed by council as far as the uh, oh, veh- vehicle maintenance center, which it's been on course.
Yeah, very good, all right, that was, those were my questions, thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers, any questions or comments?
No, thank you, I don't have any other questions other than the ones that you've answered, so thank you.
And Councilman Majors.
Yeah, so. I guess the, how are we keeping pace with uh, keeping our fleets up to date and, you know, and everything while we do, while we are currently, you know, lacking staff in that department right now?
I can answer that if possible, yes, we um, we, we have uh, outside vendors that will have placed us on the top priority of their list until we're able to fulfill our vacancies to continue to move forward, they are, have made themselves uh, available to us throughout the season up until the end of the year as we continue to interview, to have start, continue the process of hiring. We have one that we have already interviewed that is, that we have in the process to be hired. And we have a, again, we have a shop foreman position that we are interviewing for. And that would bring us back to three.
Okay, um, so, but with some of the additional positions not looking to be filled until at least Q two and maybe quarter three, are we okay with the slight increase in the proposed budget for guest maintenance and repair? So I'm assuming that's where the additional funding is coming from to take care of the uh, the, any uh, the additional vendors that are helping with maintenance that our current fleet management staff aren't able to do.
That's correct, we, we will continue as we continue to uh, hire uh, mechanics. We have our vendors continuing to keep us at the top priority so we can continue functioning throughout the city.
And just the last question for me, uh, the rental line item has gone up under fleet management uh, by about about seventy-six thousand, so just wanted to see where that is the proposed budget, last year was uh, three hundred and thirty-six, this proposed budget is nine hundred and thirty-two.
What's, where are you?
I'm on, yes. Uh, the expenditure analysis detail, page one thirty-three on my document.
That's part of the enterprise program.
That's the enterprise program, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, the one question I have, um, Councilman Major just asked, so I don't have any other questions, thank you for being here tonight. Anyone else? Thank you, I suppose we'll move on to the next apartment. And that would take us to the Bureau of Parks, Recreation and Facilities. Good evening, if you could just uh, introduce yourselves and then um, go over some of your accomplishments this year as well as some of your goals for next year and what your department does. And then you will go over any questions that were uh, asked beforehand and you answered in writing, you can just read and read the responses as well. If we have any further questions, we'll ask.
Good evening, council, uh, my name is David Baker, I am the director for the Parks Recreation Facilities Department for the city. Um, some of the accomplishments, I think for this year would definitely be uh, the grant funding that our department has received. Currently, uh, one of our largest grants that, that I think we've ever received, uh, from my knowledge.
Mr. Baker, if you will, I'm speaking a little more directly into the microphone, you have a very soft spoken voice.
Sorry about that. Uh, so what I was saying is one of our, our larger accomplishments this year was, um, I mean thankfully, the uh, the grants department was able to acquire a thirteen million dollar grant, uh, COVID, uh, CDBG grant. Um, which we are hoping to accomplish, um, you know, four different playgrounds throughout the city with, with just this money along with some um, project management positions to administer the grants and the, the projects themselves. That's probably one of the, the biggest things, uh, we've also expanded some of our programming uh, through the Parks and Rec Department, which we've gotten some pretty amazing feedback from the public on. And we have successfully ran our one pool uh, this year, which although it might not seem like it's a big feat uh, this year in our field, many of our coworkers in different areas were just shutting down pools uh, due to lack of staffing uh, throughout the year. So um, all those things put together, I think, there's many, many more, but those are the first that come to mind that we really did um, kind of, you know, get done that we are proud of as a whole, the department. All right, so questions now? All right. Uh, so. When do you intend to fill the Parks and Recreation Program Manager vacancy position? Uh, and then it says what quarter and then external candidates. So um, due to uh, getting a balanced budget, uh, this position was removed this year. Um, so we, we will not be uh, filling that position. Um, and so the next question we have here is uh, you're asking for the, the job scope for the position and that, I do have job scopes here for everyone, uh, for all the positions that we have um, available. So if you'd like to pass those out to everybody, we have extras. All right, so the next um, question is, when do you plan on filling the Recreation Assistant Manager vacancy position? What quarter and external candidates? Uh, so the Parks and Recreation position would love to fill as soon as HR has the ability to do so. Um, basically what happens is every year we have uh, the budget hearings. Everyone's budget gets passed, um, and then after that happens, HR kind of gets flooded with requests to fill positions. Um, so again, that's one of the things I'd love to tell you, we're gonna do it right away, but we will do it as soon as we, we can. And that'll be the, the answer for each of these questions that it does get passed. And again, the job scope that's in there. Okay, um, when do you plan on filling the Community Events Coordinator role? And then again, what quarter and then external candidates? So this is the same answer, uh, this position I'm excited about, if, if we get it passed, um, it's gonna make a big difference. I think in our Parks and Rec Department and for the public as a whole, for the city. Uh, but again, that position, as soon as we have the ability, we will start advertising for it. And again, the job scope you guys have for that one. Um, when do you plan on filling the two, or filling the two labor, two Um, when do you plan on filling the two, or filling the two labor or two vacancies? Uh, what quarter and then external candidates? So, so we are currently, uh, trying to fill these positions. We are having interviews and we are advertising for them, so uh, if we have any luck, you know, hopefully we'll get it done before the end of the year, but it just depends on candidates. Okay, when do you intend to fill the five new Park Ranger vacancies? Uh, what quarter and then external candidates? So um, again, due to balancing the budget, we have removed four of the five candidates. Uh, we do have one additional position in there. And again, uh, this is something that I personally would love to get filled as soon as possible. Depending on what council deems as, uh, appropriate, we could have an influx of well over twenty million dollars to the Parks Department, uh, just for the play structures throughout the city. Um, so we are definitely putting some emphasis on upkeep and the safety side of things for those structures. Cause we definitely plan on seeing a influx in usage. The next question is please show the job, job scope, you guys have that, uh, and then you would like to know the diversity compliments for the department. Uh, so in all of our departments, we have, uh, ten black males, thirteen white males, two black females, seven white females and nine Hispanic males. Uh, next question we have are are any of your employees bilingual? We have nine bilingual employees. And then the next question is, who are the miscellaneous contractors? Or who will be the miscellaneous contractor, or who will you be using for miscellaneous contractors? I apologize, uh, for the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so most, all of our miscellaneous contracts, um, will go out to bid. And when they go out to bid, uh, that, that's kind of determined at the bid process on who those contractors are, and we do follow all of the finance, you know, guidelines and parameters for that. So unfortunately, I, I do not know who they'll be until that. I think that's all the questions for, uh, Parks and Recreation.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna open it up to my colleagues for questions. I'll start to my far left this time, which isn't very far tonight with Councilman Majors.
Thank you. I'll, I'll say, no question right now. It's more of a general comment, but it's not directed at for the administration. I'll save that till no comment, no question at this current moment, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Bowers.
Thank you. I just have a follow-up question. Thank you for all your responses to the questions I submitted. But I, I'd like to learn more about the Community Events Coordinator. It's my understanding that this person will be sort of ingrained in the neighborhoods conducting events. Is that correct? And the vision that you have for this role?
Yeah, absolutely. So we currently have the, uh, Special Events and Marketing Department underneath us. And the mission they have is to bring dollars into the city, to bring people from outside the city into the city to see, you know, what we have to offer, uh, to, to spend money at our local bars, restaurants, stores. Um, this position would be to enrich the experience that our, our city residents have. Uh, so it's not gonna focus on bringing outside in, it's gonna focus on, um, you know, showing everyone within what we have to offer and what we can do. So, uh, they'll do a very similar role to what our Marketing Events Department does, but they'll focus on internal city residents instead of external bringing funds into the city.
Okay, um, do you envision some collaboration maybe with other bureaus uh, within the city? I'm specifically thinking about, um, the Community Service Aids or the Community Policing Division.
Yeah, absolutely. We, I mean, we, we already collaborate with them. Um, you know, they're a great help to us if we ever need any assistance out in the community. Um, we, you know, we utilize the, the Park Rangers as much as possible. We try and do things in green spaces, but obviously with this position, uh, it could be anywhere. You could be doing large-scale block parties. We could have, um, you know, more grassroots concert series uh, going on. Uh, we could, you know, again, they're gonna, um, really take over for like, things like the, the Bash of the Brownstone or the holiday events or the Easter egg hunts, or you, you name it, all the different things we do internally through Parks and Rec, but yes, they, they will absolutely have a role within many different departments. So they'll utilize the help from all the different departments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Matson.
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I don't really have that many questions. Um, I, I will say, uh, a couple of comments and then, and then one question. Uh, one, thank you for, for being forward-thinking, um, with, with some of these grants as well as for building in project managers, uh, cause I think that's important to keep things on task. Uh, to making sure we have someone to manage those projects, to understand it doesn't always have to be an internal candidate that you can build that into the grant to make sure those things are being taken care of, uh, without putting more work on, on the staff we have. Um, I do have one question. What is your vision? I know sometimes you, you come down and you've got like PowerPoints and you're giving us your vision for like city pools, city parks, like the future of, of these, these items. Um, so any ideas on some of your visions for like the city pools? Or, um, I, I know one of the grants was for like a splash pad, uh, so just some of those ideas. Um, I always like to our, our budget is supposed to be a map, um, and, and our, our hopes for, for what the city is going to, to be the next fiscal year. Um, and so, uh, usually that's what gets me excited about the budget process is kind of seeing those visions. Uh, so if you could just give us some of, some of your thoughts on where you'd like to see the Parks and Recs Department go, like your goals for the next year.
Um, so I know that, that, uh, we've had talks with our, um, uh, with, with Mister Hartman, uh, the Business Administrator for the city, and he's working on some um, different funding streams for Parks and Rec, uh, to see if he can't get us established with, uh, other entities to, to be able to fund some of the requests that we have. Um, so I think once that, uh, if he's successful with that, that we should be able to really start, um, kind of expanding what, what we can offer to the public. Um, I know in this year's budget, you know, we are super fortunate with these grants, so we definitely will continue to move forward. There won't be any stagnant. Won't be sitting around at all, but, um, I'm hoping that, uh, with the assistance of the Business Administrator, uh, we'll be able to continue moving forward, you know, strongly moving forward, uh, with those visions. So, um, my vision for the, the pool structures and the program and all that, I could, I could go over that all day long, but really, one of the things you as council need to know is that we are, uh, going to do a lot of research. We want to know what the public wants. Uh, we've done more surveys so far, um, in the past year than the past five years that, that I've been here, uh, because we were really, we, we're starting to get some of the manpower that we've needed for a long time to be able to implement those questions and get out there. We do door-to-door surveys, we have online surveys. Um, every time we do an event, we do giveaways to try and get people to fill out surveys. So I guess, I, I know I'm rambling about this, but my vision is one thing. I think we'll, we'll mix that, but the biggest thing is we're gonna get a lot of people's input. And it's gonna be a long process and, and you will be part of that. You'll see, you know, what we're doing as far as town meetings and and, um, getting out there. But I do have PowerPoints on that if you'd like to see, you know, some of the, the possibilities of what we could do. Cause we do show that to the public as well, saying, here are all your options, you know, tell us what you like. There's so many things out there now, people don't even know exist. And, you know, you think it's only an amusement park, but we can actually have that here at the city. We do have that ability, especially with this grant funding that we're getting.
Thank you very much. And then, um, maybe just some updates on some of the things that you are doing. Um, for me, budget times also time to brag a little bit about things that are going on in the city or projects that are going on that maybe the public doesn't know about. Uh, could you get us an update on the Reservoir Park? Um, what's going on there? Uh, some of the grants that you guys have had, I mean, they're written for specific things. What are some of those things they're written for? Just you know, some of those updates, even if you don't have them on top of your head, if you can get them to us, so we can make sure the public's aware of, of what's going on.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, uh, what I'll do is I'll get them to you guys. That way you have a complete picture of everything. I won't leave anything out. Um, because some of the stuff we have is very notable. I mean, Reservoir Park's kind of in the front of everybody's thought process, but there's a lot of other projects that we're doing out there that are also, you know, very noteworthy too. So I will definitely get those to you.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alright, I will add one more. For some reason, I just can't stop talking at the moment. Um, when it comes to our parks, um, I, I live pretty close to one, pretty much right across the street. Um, and one thing that's very important to me is, uh, park safety. Uh, I see that we have some Park Rangers in here that, that, uh, unfortunately at the moment aren't able to be budgeted for. Um, how do we think we're doing on park safety, especially, um, I've noticed it, uh, as our unhoused population in the city increases. I'm seeing more and more people, um, of the unhoused population spending more time sleeping in parks and things like that. And with the park being right across the street, there's also a school bus, three school bus stops at that park. Um, and so in the morning you have kids, very young kids at the park. Um, obviously they wanna play in the park because while you're waiting for the school bus, why not play in the park? But then you also have people that are essentially trying to live at the park sometimes. Um, so what are some of the things that we might be doing to, to address that and, and our park safety?
Uh, so our Park Rangers, excuse me, they are outfitted, uh, with the information on where uh, those individuals can go, you know, where they can get help and assistance. Uh, we do ask individuals, uh, if they're at a park and, uh, they're becoming a nuisance to uh, move on. And then, like I said, we always give them the information on where they can go and what they can receive at that area. You know, we, we, in the Parks Ranger Department, aren't so much a, an enforcer of anything. We just kind of give more information. And, uh, if we do have individuals that are more compatible with, and they, they are being a nuisance to the public, we obviously, uh, just contact the police, but it's, it's more of an oversight and a help. Uh, so that, that's really what we're out there for. So if we can give them the info, we do, uh, we do have handouts for the public. Um, you know, their mission is to engage with the public as much as they can. At this time of year, it gets a little harder. Um, but you know, we, we do, we purchase things for kids, you know, for them to give to kids. I mean, we have dog treats, we have poop bags, we, you name it. There's all kinds of stuff they have, frisbees, footballs, basketballs, that they just keep in their cars and uh, if they have the chance to go up to a total stranger and, and kind of give them the lowdown on what's going on in this park and, and where they can go for X, Y, or Z, you know, that's what they're supposed to be doing while they're out there, along with the not-so-fun stuff of you know, ticketing vehicles or making sure people are being safe or whatnot. So that's, that's what they're, they're doing on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Majors?
Yes, um, just one. So with the parks, I know, um, I, I guess just want to make sure we're utilizing all of our parks at the best of our ability. Um, you know, as Cherokee mentioned, you know, it's unfortunate that we're not gonna be able to find it in current budget to fund some additional Park Rangers. Uh, but just wanted to talk to you about, um, any of your thoughts or ideas about ways to generate any additional revenue from our current, uh, park system.
Uh, additional revenue from the park system, I, I think it's a longer conversation as far as like park permit fees. Uh, and that's something that obviously you as council have to, um, you know, give approval on anything we do in that area, but that is something that we will have to sit down in the, hopefully near future to discuss, you know, what would be appropriate. Uh, you know, we haven't changed those numbers for many, many years. Um, so that is a possibility. Um, again, if we have, uh, more resources financially put into our parks, we can offer more. And then if there are things, resources that people would like to utilize, we can then get, you know, a funding from those resources. So uh, something I always tell the public, I always tell our vendors, uh, the out of City Island, is, uh, the more money they pay as far as like our rent or vendor fees go, the more that goes back into where their business is housed. So that's kind of what we do. If we have, um, sports teams playing at the fields and, and we receive revenues from those teams, all that money goes straight back into that area. So it's not put back into the general fund and disappears. It, it does go back into that park.
Right. And then with respect to our park fees, do you believe our park fees are competitive with surrounding municipalities, or where do you think um, we are in terms of those, and not just trying to increase them, but want to make sure we're on a, on a level playing field and we're ensuring that you know, that there's that space there.
Because we are litigation over that very question, uh, which is what the ACLU litigation, we anticipate that proposals will be wrapped up by December thirty-first. Uh, that a package of proposed regulations related to it will come into effect in the first quarter and materialize into a proposed ordinance, uh, in the first half of the year. So there'll be a sort of a robust chance for that discussion as we go on. But right now, we have been in very long detailed negotiations. Uh, there is, one of the debates is the manner in which a fee is set for the use of a public facility. That's one of the issues, uh, that's there.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none, thank you very much for being here tonight. I look forward to, uh, some information from you about, uh, some of the wonderful things going on and some of the wonderful visions that, uh, that are possible here in the city of Harrisburg with the Parks Department.
I'll have the PowerPoints ready for you.
Alright. And then next, when is I find my agenda? Here we are. Next, we have Bureau of Neighborhood Services and Park Maintenance.
Okay, um, so Parks Maintenance, Parks and Rec Facilities, Special Events, all these different departments, they are very, very intertwined now. I mean, we, we all rely on each other on a regular basis. So their, their goals and their accomplishments, a lot of those are similar to what we just went over. Um, they're really kind of the, the support crew that keeps everything that we get up and running. So uh, Parks and Rec makes something nice and shiny and brand new, and then Parks Maintenance keeps it that way as best that they can with the resources that they have. Um, so really, they, they are, it's not the glamorous, uh, department, but we would be in big trouble if we didn't have them. So that's, you know, in a nutshell, um, but you know, they do projects as well. So, uh, we do as much in-house as we can, and I think that would probably be some of the, the notable things for Parks Maintenance. It's just uh, the basic maintenance and upkeep they've done internally throughout our park systems as far as irrigation issues go, erosion issues, um, safety issues in a regular basis. And then basically being able to fix things on a very tight budget at times. Uh, that I think a lot of other people wouldn't have the ingenuity to be able to do. So, so that's, that's what they're doing. Alright, so the first question for Parks Maintenance is, when do you intend to fill the Parks, um, the Parks Maintenance Manager vacancy? What quarter of twenty twenty-three and external candidate? Uh, so this position has been filled already. We have an internal candidate. Uh, he has been with the city for over twenty years. And he has stepped up, uh, and decided to take, he did an interview along with external candidates. Um, and as you can imagine, he had a wonderful interview because he's been here for so many years and he's been a, a, just a remarkable um, asset for the city the entire time he's been here. So, uh, he is now in the Parks Maintenance Manager position. Um, and, uh, that's, that's what we're doing with that. Um, so this question, when do you plan on filling the Best Practices Life Safety position, uh, that's currently vacant? And then in what quarter twenty twenty-three, external candidate? Uh, so this one, this is a sad one to me. I know this is a multi departmental position, uh, that, that I've heard from HR and Public Works that, that they were in need of. Um, but due to, uh, balancing the budget, again, this is one of those ones that we had to, uh, remove from books just so we can, uh, make the numbers correct within the budget. And if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's the last of the questions for Parks Maintenance.
It is. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and, and open up to my colleagues for any, any questions or comments, starting to my right with Councilman Matson.
Uh, no questions for me, thank you.
Council President Bowers.
Thank you. I just have some follow-ups regarding some of the other vacancies available. Um, so we have the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Manager. Do you have any intention to fill that vacancy?
Uh, yep, so that, that vacancy is currently, uh, filled. It is filled by, uh, Mister Robert Freddy.
Oh, that's the same one. Sorry, I didn't realize that was the same one.
Well, it, it's good you brought that one up. Uh, that position, I think we have one discrepancy in the budget here. Uh, it looks like for twenty twenty-three, it is budgeted, uh, for fifty-eight thousand, uh, but in twenty twenty-two is at sixty-six. So I think we just need to, uh, change that back to sixty-six thousand for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you for that correction. Uh, the labor two? Uh, the labor two, there are two vacancies that are partially funded here. Do you, when do you intend to fill those vacancies?
Uh, so again, I mean, we, we are in dire need of all positions throughout the Parks Department. Um, so as soon as we are, uh, physically able to fill those positions, we absolutely will.
Okay. I'm assuming the same for the two, uh, special or seasonal assistance to the city forester vacancies.
So those positions, we, we're actually going to, um, be a little bit more, um, the, the planning season is either in the fall or in the spring. Uh, so we want to make sure that we have those positions filled to, uh, cover either the fall or the spring. Due to the way that the position is designed, uh, there's not enough funding and, uh, to fulfill our ask me obligations. We cannot have them for both seasons. Uh, so it really comes down to, uh, the city forester and the Parks Department and the amount of interest we have from the public on when we structure a hiring for those individuals. So we can get the most basically bang for their, their time so they can do the most.
Okay. And then the one, two, five vacancies for the landscape technician ones. These are new roles.
These are, um, landscape technician ones. I believe those are being funded. Maria, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe those are being funded, uh, from the ARPA funding or the, uh, COVID CDBG funding.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
No, thank you for clarifying. I don't have any other questions.
Those individuals, we hope will be doing more, uh, specifically tree work for, uh, residents.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Majors.
Thank you. You know, maybe this is for Maria or, or you, uh, Mr. Baker, Ms. Color, Mr. Baker. Uh, where are we funding the city arborist or forester from?
Uh, that's coming 100% out of the host municipal fee or fund.
Okay. All right, um, maintenance, no, no questions for me.
All right. Thank you. Um, I don't have any further questions. So I think that kind of wraps it up for you. Thank you for being here tonight. If you have anything you want to add, feel free to add it. If not, I believe we'll be moving on to the Bureau of Information Technology.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. If you could introduce yourself and, uh, go over what your bureau does, uh, some of your goals for this coming year and some of your accomplishments for this current year.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I'm Steve Bortner, IT Director for the city. Um, some of the things we do, we support all the technology needs for all city departments and all city locations. Um, we ensure that all systems are available and functioning correctly for all the appropriate city employees. Um, we evaluate any future technology needs that the city, uh, may have. And finally, uh, we provide technical support to all city departments for any, uh, technical assistance that they have. Uh, some of the accomplishments this year, uh, in May, we implemented a new phone system, which will save the city over $25,000 per year. Um, the big thing we worked on this year is the financials phase of Operation Municipal Migration. Uh, we're wrapping that up. It's scheduled to be implemented January the third. Um, and so far we've had over 30 employees spend about 1,900 hours on the project. Um, we also began activities on the human capital management and tax billing phase of the migration. Um, some of the goals for next year, um, to implement both tax billing and the human capital management phase, and then begin the activities for licensing permits and codes enforcement, um, as well as, um, utility billing. Um, and then we also plan to implement a new help desk ticketing system, um, and expand the use of, uh, laser fees for cities.
Thank you. And I believe there were some questions asked of your department beforehand. If you could read over those questions and the responses, that would be appreciated.
Yes. Uh, first one is, can you provide an overview of the city's technology needs that are addressed in the budget? On the following, uh, items are addressed, Operation Municipal Migration, um, which includes the mainframe finance system and payroll system. Um, public facing laser face portal for integration with the city's website. Uh, virtual tape server, uh, for off-site data center, um, storage for mainframe systems, uh, maintenance and support of our, uh, open system, both hardware and software, uh, GIS software, uh, the public facing laser fish portal, uh, cybersecurity awareness, training and phishing platform, a replacement of aging PC and aging printers, and then the Microsoft Office 365 licenses. Uh, second question, can you provide a tentative timeline of migration for the mainframe? Uh, phase one, as I mentioned, will be implemented in January. Uh, phase two, which is human capital management, fourth quarter of 2023. Phase three, which is tax billing, uh, implementation in fourth quarter of 2023. Uh, licenses, permits and codes enforcement implementation first quarter of 2024. A utility billing and collections, uh, first quarter 2024. And then phase six asset maintenance and management, uh, second quarter of 2023. Uh, third question, can you please provide for the benefit of the public an update on the Operation Municipal Migrations Steering Committee? Um, yes, the committee consists of 10 members with representation administration, city council, city treasurer, and the city's office. Uh, it's scheduled to meet every other week and the committee discusses current status of the project, addresses any pertinent issues, makes decision on resource changes, scope changes and upcoming schedules, and determines when to communicate appropriate information to employees and customers. Uh, next question, what is the bureau's diversity complement? Uh, we have five males, one of which is Asian. Uh, next question, are any current employees in the department bilingual? Uh, we do have one who speaks both, uh, Dujar, Dujarati, which is Indian and Hindi. Uh, next question, when do you intend to fill the help desk PC specialist vacancy? What quarter of 2023 and internal or external applicants? Uh, we intend to fill that, uh, first quarter of 2023, uh, with an external applicant. And an update, since I answered this question, we do have two interviews on Monday for that. Uh, next question, when do you intend to fill the GIS administrator vacancy? What quarter of 2023 and an internal or external applicant? Um, that position was filled on November the 7th, and we have a very qualified, uh, person for that position. And the last question, when do you intend to fill the Deputy Director of IT vacancy? Uh, what quarter of 2023, internal or external applicants? Uh, we intend to fill that first quarter of 2023 with an external applicant.
Thank you very much. I will open it up to my colleagues for any comments or questions. I'm going to start to my far left with Councilman Majors.
Thank you. Um, you answered a lot of the questions. Uh, I mean, your budget is very slim and we appreciate that. And you guys are doing a lot with, uh, a very slim budget. Uh, could you give us a brief update? I know we had talked about previously some of the, uh, upgrades that we were looking to do within city council chambers. You can just give us an update on where those stand.
Um, yes, as of right now, we have not, uh, done too much, um, because of vacancies. We haven't had the time to focus on it. Uh, we did, uh, have one vendor give us, um, a proposal, uh, probably back in the May-June timeframe. Um, Matt Maisel is going to be scheduling, um, a discussion with another vendor within the next couple of weeks. Um, and then hopefully you'll have a better idea of what direction ahead with that from a vendor and a equipment standpoint.
Okay. Uh, and are these just, uh, like, are we doing, have these been gone out to bid or is it just, these are just conversations that we're having with, um, vendors?
At this point, it's just conversations. We're trying to get our arms around exactly what we need in order to figure out what, who to talk to to, uh, give us quotes, one, uh, the equipment.
Okay. Um, well, I'm glad to, I'm glad to hear the timeline that we're looking at and are we, we're on pace to be done. At this point, it looks like Q4 2024, most of the migration should be completed.
Yeah, by mid 2024, we should be.
Okay. Um, oh, uh, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we have that GIS administrator position filled. Uh, hopefully we'll be able to meet them and get some of their ideas. I know there's a lot that we can do with, um, improving the city's infrastructure and, you know, getting information and data to people via GIS, but I know one of the other complications is this transition from our old mainframe. Uh, but would look forward to hearing from, uh, them and giving some of their thoughts and your thoughts on that. Uh, but no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening. I just have one follow-up question. Thanks for your responses to the questions previously submitted. Um, it's in relation to the equipment needed for council chambers. So does this budget for next year, uh, I guess potentially account for some upgrades? Or is this something that you anticipate, um, a longer discussion once we're fully migrated?
Potentially we could, uh, fund some of it out of the IT budget, but I believe from discussion with Matt Maisel, he's got money in his budget for the equipment as well.
Oh, that's interesting because he said last night that it was coming from,
and I'm not aware.
Coming from your budget. So that's why I just wanted to get some clarity.
It's not in my original budget that I, it was in his and it's going to be moved to mine. I'm fine with that.
I think your question is, is it anywhere?
Yes. Is it anywhere? I'm, I'm just, I just have concerns and I did mention this last night with Mr. Maisel that, um, while many of our regulars aren't physically attending our meetings, um, I know that they are watching and listening through very media. And some of the feedback that we've received, they can't hear us. They can't hear council members. They can't hear many of the, uh, meeting participants. And the information particularly surrounding, um, recent budgetary items and financial matters with the city is imperative for people to be able to hear. So I'm, I'm, it's, it is a concern. So I don't know if we can figure out between the two budgets where we might be able to, uh, purchase some new equipment, maybe if it's just microphones as a start or if there are other, um, expenditures needed. I would appreciate that update.
And Madam President, the council is free to make an amendment to put it in their budget. I've just said, if you want the equipment, the council is free to do that.
I know, but if I'm getting different feedback saying it's here and then it's, it's, it's sort of bouncing back and forth. So thank you for that, uh, recommendation. And I have no problem doing that, but I just want to make sure the money or funds wasn't accounted somewhere else before making that amendment.
But they won't spend it twice.
Well, I, I don't know.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Matson.
So my question is regarding cybersecurity, um, particularly every once in a while I get these like phishing emails. I haven't gotten them recently, but, um, I used to get them from Mayor Pappin's.
They're still coming.
Yeah.
They won't stop.
Okay. And then I, once in a while I'd get one from, you know, Mayor, President Williams. And I would forward it over to IT. Um, and I know we've had some close calls with, um, some hacking. I mean, how are we feeling about where we're currently at with that? And, you know, does the budget guarantee that we have resources to make sure that, um, our privacy is safe?
Uh, one of the things I mentioned, it's in our budget is the, uh, cyber security training and phishing platform that we've had in place for almost five years now, um, which in essence tries to train employees on what to look for in emails, how to know if an email is coming from a place where it's really not where it says it's coming from. So, um, and we also have something called the Fish Alert button, which allows employees to submit that to our help desk, which we evaluate. And then if we find anything new, we block the domain, uh, so that we do not get any, any more from that domain. So I think most employees are, um, pretty good at recognizing whether something is real or fake. And if they're not sure, they will call us. They will stop by and show us an email for us to evaluate. So overall, I think we have done a fairly decent job of educating employees. There's more we could do, obviously, but, um, we have been, uh, doing this on a monthly basis now for about five years.
And with all the upgrades that we're doing, for example, the cybersecurity for the Treasury Department looks similar to our, or the rest of city government, for example, and I'm just using them in the, because I feel like they're the ones that handle some of the most sensitive information when it comes to taxpayers.
Right. And they, they are kind of all under the same umbrella of other city employees. So anything that comes into them would get to us if they thought it was suspicious.
So I guess, long story short, you feel that we're secure and you have everything?
Right now, yes.
Okay.
Very good.
And we just, um, had a, almost a 40% increase in our cybersecurity insurance, as we mentioned earlier, Brian. We'll be discussing that on Monday under general expenses. So, so we are trying to remain insured to the highest level to make sure that, that, of course, he's doing a fantastic job with all the training, but in the event we would have an event, um, we believe we are properly insured if we took the risk of paying even, uh, the 40% increase because it's critical that we remain insured and safe from an IT standard.
Uh, that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think I only have one question, which is under, uh, line item four, five, three, zero, five, one, uh, equipment data processing for $500, $5,000. Could you just explain what that is?
Um, the bulk of that is 320,000 for our annual, uh, SaaS fee, uh, license fee to run Munis. Um, so that will continue every year. The bulk of the implementation fees have been budgeted for already. So, um, it has come down about 95,000 from the 2022 budget.
Okay. And then the reason why I asked is because looking at the expenditure status report that was given to us, uh, the other line item, uh, from the budget, which is, that encompasses, which is four, nine, 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 five. Uh, it looks like we only spent about 6% of those funds this year. So I wasn't sure if, uh, that was just a technical error on, on the expenditure status report or if, uh, we just looked at spending a lot more than we budgeted for. If that makes sense. Last year, If that makes sense. Last year we budgeted for six hundred and twenty-five thousand and as of October, we spent fifteen thousand.
Right. And there, there's a requisition in the system now for three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So it's something that, that kind of we see at the end of the year, kind of all comes together. Okay.
There may be some of that leftover, but yeah, we're gonna spend a big chunk of that in these.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense then. Thank you. It's the only question that I had. Anyone else with any questions or comments for the IT department? All right. Saying none. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I know it was a little confusion whether tonight or whether it was Tuesday. Uh, so thank you for making yourself available tonight. Uh, and we appreciate all the hard work that you do in your department. I believe that ends committee business and I will turn it back over to Council President Bowers. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice President Green. Uh, this time we will open the floor for public comment. Just our standard housekeeping rules. If you, I would like to offer a public comment, please state your name and your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please state the vicinity, um, in which you live. You have two minutes to share your comment and Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section. Okay. Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left. Seeing and hearing no one, the time is seven twenty PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I can.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.